Eji Mafa, pretty baby
Ah ha, I'm a rich child
Come and see Eji Mafa
I beg you be aware of her
Eji Mafa with her problem
Ah ha, I'm a rich child
Eji Mafa na flaunt it to her bush
I beg you be aware of her
Now who go come Eji Mafa?
Ah ha, I'm a rich child
Now who go show her love?
I beg you be aware of her
Eji Mafa on the move One woman and several troubles Do you know that both of you are so shameless? I cannot believe this! Are you kidding me? Since morning that I left for work? Eh? My god! Vero? So since morning? Day in, day out? The only thing you know how to do is to sink on his laughs? Suck him out? Eh? Till the end of the month, so that they will pay you salary? And you? You'll be there? Swallowing what you don't know and smiling like a goat? This Vero has been my neighbor for donkeying And I can tell you with all assurance and with my full chest That Vero does not brush her teeth regularly! Eh? So what you even seeing ah? What are you enjoying in this dirty pig? And you Vero? What are you enjoying in... A man who doesn't have a job? Eh? I'm asking you a jobless fool! No, 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 no. You don't need to tell him that. Of course you don't need to tell him that. Because he knows what I will do to him if he uproves that foolish mouth To utter a word! As in "just say she am here!" And you will see what I'll do to you. In fact, I will arrest you! And I will make sure they throw you in jail! And you will not see a mouth to suck From donkeying. Because I have seen that sucking mouth gives you life. Ha! Do you know? That there is a law In this town Called indecent expulsion? I'm very sure you have not heard of it? Oh yes! In fact, I was with the deputy governor The other day. And we were deliberating on that issue. He was telling us things about it And the kind of punishment He wants to mete out to people That have found committing that crime. So! Take that useless love of yours Go inside your house and lock the door And stop showing the people in this compound Dirty things. Because we cannot entrust it. And let me tell you Before you even think of flaunting my orders You know this boy is a jobless boy? In fact, the only job he has managed To keep is selling gala at the ghostloo. Hmm? If I like Mboya Legesha Yes, I will go to my office And I will tell them that I suspect that he's a criminal I will tell them that I suspect that He is one of the bad eggs Terrorizing people in this town! And before you can say Jack Robinson They will hook you up and throw you inside the cell! And you will never smell the light of the day again. Now! Take that useless, rotten, and indecent love Into your flat! Before I count to five. One! Two! Three! Foolish cook. Not like a practice.
Tony? Does she have such power?
I don't know. Such against? All I know is that I've seen her working with The town council tax force For illegal KK transport operators.
Wow!
Uh-uh. What is that? Eh? Don't let it bother you now baby. Don't let it bother you now, Pepe Body, they do them. She said I'm idle, but you and I know that I'm not idle. Baby, am I idle? You know I say human hair? I say original Rondo human hair. From Turkey? Yes! Please, is it my fault that I do not have a shop yet? Is it my fault baby? Don't worry yourself, I will get a, I will get a shop. I'm selling online. And it's not a crime to sell things online. Please baby, don't let it bother you. Come and continue kissing me. Baby? Are you scared of her?
No, no.
You don't have to be scared of her. This is my house, she does not have right over my house. Eh? Yeah, she can say anything she want to say outside But inside here, she does not have the rights. Come and be kissing me. Today you kiss me 99 times. I understand.
How come you love kissing so much like this? You know kissed me from my life.
I don't know. But I grew up loving kissing more than the other two. Yeah, love you, kiss me, kiss me. This is too much! Hey! These people, they don't sleep! Eh? Making loud noises like rats! Kissing like pigeon! Eh? And all these noises Into the ears of a woman who doesn't even have a man? Is this one not looking for trouble now? No, they are looking for my trouble now, it is obvious. Hmm? If I get into the mood now... Hey! What will I even do with myself? Hmm? If these idiots succeed in putting me in the mood Palasachama ho How will I handle it?
Respect yourself, stay. Can I go for you?
Oh, scum, scum, scum! This is enough! Even if it is gone now and her cockam, we are cleaning This one is more than that. It's like I will arrest somebody this time! Hey! You are under arrest! Fuck, I saw them back! Where are you? Hey! What is going on there? What is going on there? Come! Are you people kissing inside that room? Who is making that useless and foolish noise? Are you mad? It's something of a good people! Eh, in fact! Eh, Vero? Vero? Come and open this door! Open this door now! You are very foolish and useless! Open this door! You nonsense!
Auntie Ije, good evening.
Oh, second evening! Look at my grandmother, calling me auntie. Anyway It is not true that I came here to see. Hmm? Where is that your useless boyfriend? Where is he?
My boyfriend, he's sleeping inside.
He's sleeping? He's sleeping inside? But his hands Are touching your junction! Making you laugh like an idiot! Not so! He is sleeping, but his hands are not sleeping! Eh, my friend! Shift from that door! Shift from that door, because I'm going inside to drag him out! I know he's inside. Hide him because he's naked. In fact, just do yourself a favor. Tell him to come out the way he is Because I want to see him now.
Oh, you can't do that, you can't.
I can't do that.
Yes, now.
You cannot do that. She said I cannot do that. I cannot do that. Really? You are harboring A deadly and dangerous and robber In your house! And you say I cannot do that, right? You want the police force In its entire strength To come here And raid this compound early in the morning And confiscate both of you to the station? Is that what you want?
No, no, no.
Is that what you want?
No.
Okay. By the time I count from One! Two!
I told you, I told you he was sleeping.
Follow me. I want to ask you questions. And I need to be writing your answers down As you're saying them to me. Let us go.
Will you follow me?
Yes! You said you are innocent. That is the only way I can find out! Listen! I need to ask you questions. Because part of my duty As a security tax force Is to query questionable and suspicious element Anywhere I see them in town. And if If, if, if I am not satisfied with their answers Then I quickly hand them over to the police force For big action.
Okay, let's go, you can ask all the questions you want. My boyfriend will answer you, he is innocent, baby.
My friend, go back! Go back! Let him speak for himself. Speak for yourself! Hmm? And you? You're not going anywhere. Yes! Because I will still come back and ask you your own questions. And if your evidences do not matter Then I know one of you is lying! And that will end you what I have always said you are. A criminal hadn't won for that matter Who spent all his time Kissing a foolish hairdresser Who believes in her hair that she sells hairs? Yes!
Okay, let me go in and read my secrets, I'm ready.
Do you think I'm joking? Do you think I'm joking? You do not follow me now. Alright. You regret ever knowing me! You! Go in there. And lock that door as I am looking at you. Because I don't want you to come over there and listen to what you are saying. So that you now know the answer when I start asking you your own.
I will go in here, I will lock the door.
Go inside and lock that door now! So that I will hear when it opens. I know you're very Hard by night And you have coconut head. So I want to hear the door When it opens, when inside the camera, you make it to work with.
Now, come to the door. Baby, don't worry, go here. I go with you.
You said? Eh! Don't insult my girl. My god, don't fight again as a school senior Where you're con kept of. You feel your husband? Now go inside! Go inside as I'm looking at you now! Go inside! Fast!
Coming. Coming.
What happened? Move it! Nonsense! Look at that! Jax your dry ass off my bed! I need them there! Mother, what is on your mind? Look at you! What is all this? So! A young, able-bodied man like you With all your muscles You don't have work in this time! The only work you have Is to hug and kiss Veronica From morning till night Day in, day out. Is that also?
Officer Ije, I have work.
Wait, wait, shut up! Shut your mouth! Which work are you talking about? Which work do you have? Eh? Oh, so whining your waste All night long Like a hoodlum And making criminal noises Like a frog Is work? Do you make this work? That is what I'm asking you. In fact, you are disgrace! You are disgrace to manhood! You are disgrace to all men! And you are disgrace to this country! Shame! Shame on you! Young man, shame on you! Ah! What is this? In fact If you open that filthy mouth And say any rubbish here Oh, I will deal with you. I will accuse you Of a high and crime. In fact, I will go out there and tell them that You are a terrorist! I will just package you Hand you over To the anti-terrorism squad. Not here! In the FCT. Oh, that is The drug capital territory.
Officer Ije.
Shut up! Listen! I am going to deal with you. I will disgrace you! I will disgrace you so much that You won't even see their face and their leg To come back to this town again. Think I don't know what you do? You think I don't know about all of your criminal activities? That is the reason you have all the time in the world To carry your two necks next here And be kissing Veronica day in, day out? Hugging Veronica every day? Making animalistic noises like a fool? I even heard That you Are a very large And dangerous criminal guy.
Officer Ije, no!
Shut up! Yes! Yes! Admit it! Come on, admit it! Why do you want to deny? Are you saying I'm a liar? Are you saying I'm a liar? Are you saying I don't know my job? Are you saying I don't know how to conduct criminal investigation? In fact! To prove that you're a criminal And the only thing you know how to do is Criminal noises. Say that noise. I want to hear that criminal noise That you are making this time. I want to hear it. That wasn't what I heard. Repeat that criminal noise You were making.
Oh! Oh, I'm criminal, I'm criminal!
Stop making that criminal noise! My god, this is disgusting! You are a criminal! You just told me that you're a criminal With that criminal noise I just heard. Can you make that noise again? I don't want to repeat that. I said it. Make it again, let me hear. Stop it! Stop it! Stop that criminal noise, stop! You are indeed a criminal. I am very angry! I am so angry! I am mad! And I am very crazy! Because you, you, you had effort try To kiss, kiss a woman in front of me. You And you were being lovely! And my friends And when I say such things It makes me go bad! My blood burns! And you, you, you will never know why! Never! That is why She must be coming And will always do Never! Are you doing? I am telling you what is panning me! I am telling you what is annoying me! And you! You are looking at me with those criminal eyes! Hmm? Do you know What it means To snatch a man? Hmm? I have snatched you from Veronica. What do you mean by eh? Are you a baby? You're not a baby now, eh? Did you not just fema with Veronica? So you Are going to fema with me too this night? Don't worry. Just get up Lie down on the bed And do as I say. I will be gentle. I will not kill you. So tell me Do you like romantic songs? Hmm? Do you want me to sing for you? I know you do. So tell me, what song do you want me to sing for you? Love wanting tea Love wanting tea Ije muna love no fadulu wanting tea Ije muna love no fadulu wanting tea Love wanting tea Love wanting tea Ije muna love no fadulu wanting tea Ije muna love no fadulu wanting tea Folu dyakene Yakanu sengi muluwa Folu dyakene Yakanu sengi muluwa Hey! Oh! Hey! Don't mind the way I'm hard oh! Ah, I am not hard! Eh, that is what scared me, wait for me. I am actually very gentle And very romantic too, eh? So This night If it's just me and you, eh? I have snatched you from Vero. So just get up Lie down on the bed And do what I say.
I can't believe it.
Are you going to comply? Oh, I will make a change up for you! Cool down! Cool down baby! Cool down! This is not that serious! Listen! I may find you. Check me out. Confirm if I'm here. So, we can just have a good time this night. And in the morning You can go back to your room. Hmm? My baby. My love. Oya! Come here. To it in a romantic way. Lie well, what is Like, they're just like a criminal! It's like we are used to being in cell. Lie down well And face up Because I want to come on top. Lie like, lie like this. You know? Let us do this in a chat to each other. I like it. Very, very sweet. I do like it. Now I want you to take a peek At what you could enjoy. Are you safe? Oya, lie well. My friend, lie well! Let you there fuck you, lie well! Lie well! Oya! Oh, this shit, this shit, you're my normal side here. Eji Mafa? Eji Mafa? Eji Mafa, bring my boyfriend back! Bring him out, Eji Mafa! Paul! Paul, are you okay? Paulo! Paul, come out, Eji Mafa! Bring my boyfriend out! Who is that person that is Talking like this this morning? Who is that person banging like a ghost? Do you want me to deal with you? Do you want me to deal with you? Paul! Eji Mafa, bring my boyfriend out! Bring him out! Do you want me to deal with you? Eji Mafa, gonna kill, in fact, I want to die! What is all this? What is all this? Even if you are the president of this country, end of this day now Come and kill me! After he said someone's boyfriend, they went this last night After that, he has not returned! What kind of stupid questions are you asking him? Even if it's work and some Have you not finished answering all your questions by now? What is this? Bring my boyfriend out! Paulo! Vero Veronica Veronica! I see. Veronica The elecete After eating to his fear Had the liver and the mind To challenge his god to a fight To a wrestling match And that is what I'm seeing happening here now. Veronica, do you want to die? Do you want to die? Eh? You are challenging me! Mama, it's your fault! The only woman that is answering a man's name in this compound.